Good afternoon and welcome to part two of the University of Chicago Center for Effective Government School Board Governance Panel Series. My name is Sadia Simbu and I'm the Executive Director of the Center for Effective Government housed at the Harris School of Public Policy. At the Center for Effective Government, we are constantly working to bring practitioners and scholars together to strengthen democratic institutions and create a more responsive, a more effective government. This panel series was created to further that mission by sharing current education scholarships as we think through what effective school board governance looks like. Yesterday's panel focused on the representation of people and interests in school board governance. If you missed it, you can find a link into the full video at our UChicago CEG Twitter account and we'll also drop a link in the chat here. Today, we're going to turn to questions about accountability and student outcomes. You'll have the opportunity to hear from our panelists, speak about their work, and we'll also have plenty of time at the end of our discussion for questions submitted in advance of the webinar and from our audience. If you have questions that you'd like to ask, please use the Zoom Q and A function. Before we get underway, I'd also like to express gratitude to the Harris School of Public Policy, the Chicago Community Trust, the Field Foundation, and the Democracy Fund for their support of the center's work. Finally, I'm thrilled to turn things over to our moderator, the Director of the Center for Effective Government, Professor Will Howell. In addition to Will's role as CEG's Director, he's a Sidney Stein Professor of American Politics at the University of Chicago, Chair of the Political Science Department, and a co-host of Not Another Politics Podcast. Will is an expert on separation of powers in American political institutions. He has written eight books, including a co-edited volume titled Besieged: School Boards and the Future of Education Politics. His most recent book with Stanford professor Terry Mo is titled Presidents, Populism, and the Crisis of Democracy, and was released this July. Well, thank you for guiding us through this incredibly important conversation. I'll turn it over to you now.
Terrific. Thank you, Sadia, and thank you all for coming and joining us for round two. We had a terrific conversation yesterday, and as Sadia mentioned, it was focusing on issues involving representation. Who turns out for school board elections? Who runs for office? What kinds of interests are voiced? And, you know, it's hard to reduce an hour-long conversation to a nugget, but I'd suggest that an ongoing theme, a core theme of it was that the shift from appointed school boards to elected school boards isn't necessarily, or even obviously, democracy enhancing. It can be, but it needn't always be, and that much depends upon on the details, on the timing of elections. We talked a lot about on whether or not the election is at-large versus ward elections, whether or not they're partisan versus nonpartisan. It depends on the quality of the coverage that's given to the elections, the extent to which outside money interests are intervening into elections. And, and I want to, I want to say, we're really fortunate to have our panel come back together because these folks, for them, these aren't just sort of details, sort of nuisances. They've interrogated and investigated each, the relevance of all these issues in local politics generally and, and school board elections in particular. And, and I commend their work to you. To remind you who they are, we have with us Chris Berry, who is a colleague of mine at the Harris School and the William J. and Alicia Townsend Friedman Professor at the University of Chicago. We've got Rebecca Jacobson, who is an Associate Professor of the Department of Educational Administration at Michigan State University. We've got Vladimir Kogan, who's an Associate Professor in the Department of Political Science at Ohio State. Domingo Morel, who is an Assistant Professor at Rutgers University, and Jessica Traunstein, who is the UC Merced Foundation Board of Trustees Presidential Professor. And at UC Merced, you've got the university in your title, Jessica. So if I could, if I could turn to you to kick things off, Jessica, we want to think today about issues involving accountability. What are school board members appointed or elected? What are they held accountable for? But what does accountability look like and what are the implications of this for student outcomes? And if a place to start would be concerns about incumbency. There's a recognition when people worry about, you know, about the lack of accountability, some would argue at the national level. They point to the fact that people are regularly elected and reelected over and over and over again. And there's a concern that, well, if there are built-in advantages locked in by virtue of simply occupying an office, that then the promise of elections is, well, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't always deliver. But there are lots of reasons too why incumbency advantage could be a very good thing and could indicate very different kinds of things. And could you just talk to us a little bit about, is this something that you've investigated in local politics? How are we to think about incumbency advantages incumbents when we think about accountability at the local level?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So as you said, Will, the issue is complicated. And at the local level, the incumbency advantage is strong. It's powerful, just like it is at higher levels of office. It's not quite as powerful as it is in Congress, though. So particularly for city council members, there's more turnover slightly. And, you know, part of this is because in many cities and many communities, local offices are part-time jobs, right? And so people get in and come out of office on a more regular basis than, than they do in Congress. But even that said, the incumbency advantage can still be very powerful. So upwards of 80, 85% of people getting reelected who seek reelection. And, you know, that's, that's part of the puzzle here is if you're seeking reelection, there are some people who just don't, don't want to run for reelection. And so, you know, that's part of the turnover process at the local level. So I'm just going to say sort of broadly speaking, what my research shows, both in a set of articles and then in books that I've written, that when political officials, appointed or elected, are assured that they are going to maintain office for a very long term, for a very long period of time, they become less responsive to the general public and they become more responsive to special interests who can keep them in power. So that's sort of a general, it's, it's sort of a general rule to, to sort of consider here. And I, in, in mayoralities and in city council elections, we see these kinds of patterns. When people believe that there's no chance they're going to lose, then they stop paying attention to what the voters want, and they pay narrow attention to the folks who can keep them in office, the people who are donors, the people who are appointing them, the people who are the loudest and squeakiest voices in the policy process. And so generally speaking, that's what we know.
And if I could, a short follow-up, Jessica, reasons why you might be assured that you're going to hold office for long periods of time could be a function of lots of things. Could you say just a little bit about that?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So, and I, and I should have said, well, in a democracy, in any, in any representative government, if somebody in office is doing a great job, we want to return them to office, right? That is part of the democratic process. If they are serving their constituents well, if they are responding to what we want, if our schools are functioning magnificently, our mayors are clearing the snow and running our public parks and doing all the things we want them to do, then we hope to reelect them. So the mere fact of somebody getting reelected is not in and of itself a bad thing. The problem becomes when somebody is assured of maintaining that office when they get reelected, even if they haven't been responsive to what the voters wanted, or, or we don't know whether there's responsiveness. And things that can keep people in office vary depending on the system. But we know that when information levels are very low, when turnout levels are very low, when there is opaqueness to the process of how people get their positions, then they feel more certain that they're going to be able to keep that position over the long run. Competitive elections are actually pretty rare at the local level, but it's what, competitive elections are what keep elected officials on their toes.
Terrific, terrifically helpful. Thank you. Rebecca, if I could turn to you, you've written this book, we talked a little bit about it yesterday, called Outside Money and Local School Board Elections: The Nationalization of Local Education Politics. And a thing that you pointed our attention to yesterday is the role of money in school board elections and how in a number of major cities, there's been vast amounts of money that have poured in. And we thought yesterday, we discussed a bit about the implications of that for, for the representation of different interests and who turns out and who runs for office. Could you say a bit more about the relevance of money in politics as it relates to issues of accountability?
Sure. So, you know, first I just want to reiterate that outside money is not present everywhere. It certainly is a growing phenomenon in, in politics generally. And sometimes it can influence particular cities, especially cities like Chicago, that are often held up as reform models, right? So we could probably anticipate that Chicago could experience this, but they also may not. So I just think it's important to remember that it's not everywhere. However, when outside money does become a factor, it definitely can influence how school board members think about both who they are accountable to and for what they are accountable. So when it comes to who they're thinking about, we certainly heard from candidates who recognize the importance of raising lots of money. So, you know, just like we're sort of seeing at state and national elections where the day after somebody is elected, they immediately start their campaign for the next election and start fundraising. Can school board candidates, which used to be pretty sheltered from this, are now thinking about, well, what kind of votes will I have to take that will influence who continues to give me money? And we heard from some candidates who felt like they had made votes that were right for their constituents, but were not necessarily right for the people that were giving them money. And so they ended up losing some of those large donors. And so that made it harder for them to be reelected. I also think we see changes in terms of what issues they have to focus on, that they feel like they're being held accountable for. And so certainly some of those more nationalized issues around choice and charters, around turnarounds, models, around teacher tenure. You know, members that we talked to felt like they had to take really hard lines on these kinds of issues, again, to keep their donor base satisfied, but also making it more difficult for them to compromise, which maybe actually is more in line with what the general population may prefer rather than sort of these hard-line, very extreme stances. The other thing we've talked about in terms of accountability is that oftentimes, school board elections, the, the turnout for voters is extremely low. And we did find that there was an increase in turnout with outside money, maybe in part being driven by the greater attention that we found. But this is a complicated story because, as we talked about too, there's a number of factors that can cause people to turn out, sometimes just changing the timing of the election. But it definitely did look like, especially in LA where we had better data, we could actually detect more turnout because of higher increased rates of outside money. So maybe more people are actually responding and saying, I'm going to hold them accountable for what we want, not what donors want.
So it cuts, the money can cut two ways, if I hear you right, by Rebecca. It probably could a thousand ways, but there, but let me suggest too, drawing from what you've just said, is that it can, on the one hand, divert, particularly when we think about outside money, divert the attention of school board members away from, or threatens to divert their attention away from the needs and wants of a community or their constituents towards those who are going to be actually writing checks, on the one hand. But on the other hand, by virtue of raising money and thereby, what, what can happen is the elections become more salient and that that can attract more attention. And if the danger for kind of lack of accountability at the local level is born of indifference and sort of poverty of knowledge, that money can actually have a salutary effect. Have I heard you right?
Yep, that seems like you've really nailed it nicely for us.
Okay. So, look, much then depends though on what school board members are being held accountable for. And Vlad, I'm not going to come to you yet, but I want to, I want to bring up something that you said. You started a false yesterday, yesterday saying, well, schools presumably, we all ought to agree, ought to serve the interests of kids. And they ought to be in the business of enhancing learning among, among kids. And so I'm wondering what we might know about the relationship between the electoral fortunes of school board members and whether or not they're delivering on that, if not promise, then that responsibility. That is, what do we know about the ability of school board members to, the propensity to seek reelection and their ability to hold office as a function of how much kids are learning? And this is something, Chris, which you've written about. And I wonder if you might speak to that a bit, and, and to the extent you want to generalize to other issues too, that would be, that would just be terrific.
Sure, thanks. And, you know, so I've, I've written about this, you and I have written about this together back when we were assistant professors. So I think this question of what any politician is held accountable for is a fundamental one in our, in our democracy. And this applies for mayors and presidents as well as school board members. Now, one of the appealing things in principle, at least, about having something like a school board or a very specialized jurisdiction like this is that its responsibilities are relatively narrow and clear, which should make the voter's job easier. Compare this, for example, to the mayor who is responsible for police and parks, presently schools as well, and a whole host of things that make, when the voter has, still gets only one vote at the end of the day on this very complex office. And if you may like what the mayor has done on policy one, but not like what she's done on policies two and three, you face a complicated choice. And so one of the appealing arguments in favor of having a separately elected school board would be precisely that. They do this one thing, making the voter's job therefore easier. And so you and I tried to investigate, you know, how much that impact plays out in practice and whether school boards are, are held accountable. And, you know, as, as Vlad encouraged us to think about yesterday, the, the final job of a school is educating kids. And so we should start by asking our school boards held accountable for performing that task. And, you know, when we looked at the connection between test score performance and incumbent school board performance, what we found is a pretty weak one. We, we looked at South Carolina where they were initiating for the first time a standardized testing regime. And we asked whether voters responded to that new information from the tests when they went to the ballot box to vote for the school board. We found that in the first election, right after the tests were adopted, there was a correlation and it went in the direction you would expect, that the, when schools were doing better, the school board was more likely to be reelected. But we found that that relationship relatively quickly diminished. And by the second election and thereafter, we couldn't really find any connection between the student performance on tests and the electoral fortunes of the, of the school board. And there's a number of reasons why that might be. One is, you know, there's a new test, it receives a lot of publicity, the media were focused on covering it. But as the years went on, it was sort of less new information coming out, less interesting, less media coverage. And so maybe voters just had less information about it. It also may be that the tests themselves were just not that highly representative of what people thought learning meant. And there's, there's been a lot of blowback over time against test scores, particularly in Chicago. There's been a lot of criticism of people teaching to the tests or, in essence, trying too hard to improve test scores at the expense of actual, what might be perceived as actual learning. And so anyway, I think, returning to another theme from yesterday is we also need to ask not just what sort of the average voter cares about or the average person, but what are the voters in these elections care about? Because as we discussed yesterday, the voters in these elections may not be representative of the voters in the jurisdiction overall. So we know things like, you know, teachers are, you know, much more likely to vote than ordinary citizens in school board elections. According to Terry Mo from Stanford, teachers are about seven times more likely to turn out and vote in a school board election than an average person is. They have a set of concerns. Obviously, they care about their kids and they care about education, but they have a set of professional concerns. They care about their salaries, they care about their benefits and their working conditions. So that's one set of concerns that could drive school board elections. And, you know, anybody who's been living in Chicago knows that we have some, you know, unique concerns here that have to do with the closing down of neighborhood schools. For instance, the, the fact, the context here is that enrollment in the Chicago public schools has been declining over time. And there has to be some way to deal with that. We have schools that have empty classrooms and other schools that are, have excess demand. And it's been very controversial, the way that the school district, you know, has dealt with that. And I, I'm sure those would be, if we did have an independently elected school board, huge issues in those, in those elections that may have some indirect mapping back into student learning, but are not first and foremost about test scores.
And so to say that there's not an observed correlation between test scores and the electoral fortunes of school board members is not to say that there might not be other forms of learning that bear upon the electoral fortunes of school board members. Or, and it's also not to say that then these elections are entirely idiosyncratic, right? That they're just sort of, people are flipping coins. It's that attention may shift to other kinds of concerns, which may weakly relate to what's actually happening in a classroom. Terrific. Vlad, could I come to you? And let me say, we're doing our tour of duty and audience members, if you are interested, we'd love to hear from you. Please feel free to post questions in the Q and A, and we will pitch as many of them as we possibly can to our panel. But Vlad, could you, you know, yesterday, we, we, we talked about, again, issues involving representation, and in particular, the extent to which marginalized groups are gaining representation on school board elections. And you might care about that, one might care about that as a value unto itself, but when they also think of it as being important for the instrumental value that depending upon the representation of different kinds of groups within an urban environment, say, that's going to have implications for the kind of learning that happens. Because different people on school boards are going to train their attention on different kinds of needs and wants and, you know, work on behalf of them. Can, can you, this is a topic that you've, you've investigated in your own work. Can you say a bit about how we ought to think about the mapping of the representation of interests demographically on school boards into a set of educational outcomes that we, we are all concerned about?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think this is actually very much related to the previous conversation about accountability. So let me kind of combine the two. And I just, by, by my way of kind of framing, let me just say, I am like, I'm definitely a pessimist in terms of accountability. Maybe I'm even a nihilist in terms of accountability. And so here's why. So I think the finding that Chris described, I think it's pretty general that sometimes we see evidence of school board members being held accountable for performance, I think more often than not. And I think, you know, the reason why that, that is precisely because school board members have other considerations. So I'll give you an example. Here in Ohio, we've, we've done some work showing that school members are definitely not held accountable for student outcomes. But they are held accountable for like financial performance. And so when the state comes in and the auditor gives the district a bad financial rating, incumbents get voted out. Right? So now here a school board member and you are responding to incentives, not obvious that the incentives are really there to serve students well. So I think, I think that's, you know, that's one thing to think about, right? That who you're being held accountable to and what you're being held accountable for, it really matters. And it's not obvious that accountability is always good. I think there's other ways to get accountability, right? You talked about school closures. That's a great way of motivating improvement, right? If your school is bad, improve or we close you. Or as President Obama did with rich to the top, we're going to give you a buttload of money, but you have to come in and replace half the teachers. And states did that and it worked pretty well. So I think if the goal is accountability, I think electing school boards is not a very effective way of doing that for the reasons that Jessica describes. So, you know, incumbency is a bit, is big, but teachers' union endorsements actually have a bigger impact than incumbency in these school board elections. So again, if we're thinking about what's motivating school board members, it's probably not student outcomes. So I'm going to kind of become a political science nerd for a second. And so, you know, there's two ways of thinking about elections. One is accountability, the way we've been talking about it, which is, I want to stay in office and that motivates me to do things that make my constituents happy. And again, I don't think that works in education. We have another way of thinking about elections, which is selection. And so there's really famous paper from 1960s that said, you know, selection is about a representative who so shares the views of its constituents that following his or her own conviction, he or she does what the constituents want. And I think that is much more plausible in school, school districts, right? That school members do what they want. I think they think they're doing what their constituents want. I think most of the time they have no idea what the constituents actually want. So I think that's why it's really important to design a system so that you have people in office who share like the priorities and the goals of that community, knowing that the threat of losing that selection is not what's going to be driving their behavior. And so I think on that point, we have a lot of evidence that selection is really important and that who serves in, at school boards really matters. You know, and, and, you know, one thing that we see is, again, school board members don't seem to care much about racial achievement gaps. When you ask them, as people have done, they say, that's not anywhere near the top of my priorities. And I think that reflects partly who votes in these school board elections, as I talked about yesterday. Voters really look nothing like the students. But I think second, we also have evidence that the composition of school boards really matters. So we have some evidence in California, I think the most rigorous evidence we have, really using clever research designs that shows that when you have more minorities on school boards, you have better student outcomes for minority groups. Through a couple of mechanisms, you get more diverse teachers, you get more diverse principals, and you also get school boards that are more willing to put tax increases on the ballot. So we've, we've shown this in our work, there's a great PhD student at University of Virginia, Brett Fisher, who, who has a very similar analysis using a really different strategy. So I think that is pretty clear, that who serves on school boards really matters. And so getting that right, I think is much more important than hoping that once they're there, elections motivate them to do the right thing.
Terrifically helpful. Vlad, can you clarify one thing for us though, which is that you led by underscoring in Ohio the importance of these financial considerations and whether or not, you know, you're, you're doing right by the state according to some audit? That's, so there's that as a kind of, you might think of that as an outside consideration or an outside consideration is that whether or not I'm doing that which the union wants. Maybe those are things that I'm selected for, right, that are built within me. But if you're going to assume office, you better get those right according to what you've laid out for us, if, if you want to hold on to office. How are we to, so how are we to think about how that interacts with the story that you just told about the kind of intrinsic characteristics of individuals translating into different trends in learning for different kinds of groups?
Yeah, that's a, so that's a great question. I think, I, I want to, I want to not oversell like the importance of those factors, right? So as Chris said, you know, when performance matters, it doesn't matter that much. I think these, you know, the, the financial factors, when they matter, they don't matter that much. So, you know, the average school election, the margin of victory is 36 percentage points, right? 36 percent. So even if you have like some accountability, you know, if, if there is a modest penalty, I suspect most of the time that's not going to be the driving consideration. And so I think it would be great to get those incentives right, so, so that when they do matter, we get kind of everybody rowing in the same direction. I think most of the time, that's not how school members are thinking about it. I don't think there's really a realistic threat. And I think to the extent that there is a threat in their mind, it's often not connected to the reality. And so I think the one thing we can really control is the selection side of it. Because setting up systems to make sure that people in office, again, you know, share the priorities of that community and particularly the interest of the students, I think, is the one thing we can actually control, that's systematic. And I think we know matters a lot, much more than I think all this other stuff that happens after they're in office.
Super. Domingo, if I could turn to you. And in our conversation yesterday, and in your book, which Oxford University Press published in 2018, it's called Takeover: Race, Education, and American Democracy. You encouraged and you encourage us to think about the connections between schools and communities as being really vital. And I suspect you think that they're vital, not just with regard to whose views are represented, but what accountability it might look like and the extent to which kids are thriving or not in schools. Can you tell us a little bit about this?
Yeah, thanks, Will. So I'm, I'm really happy you used the word kids thriving, right? I think that that's an important part, I think is, at least in my work and the people that I speak to, is essential to their understanding of what schools do. So if we think about what it takes for kids to thrive, and in particular, cities like, like Chicago, right? Where you have problems of school to prison pipeline, where you have, obviously, issues on a number of issues, a plethora of concerns regarding health, food insecurity. And all, you know, we can go on and on and on, right? When we think about that and how schools are important to, to the, to the thriving of, of, of young people, then we have to think about outcomes and accountability in a more comprehensive way, right? So, give an example, New Orleans. So we talked about New Orleans several times yesterday, and I want to suggest that New Orleans is probably not the example that if I were to advise Chicago to go, I, I would advise not to go in that direction. And partly because of, you know, the, the research that I've done looking at public opinion in, in New Orleans, right? So what we see in New Orleans is these reforms and 25% of black teaching force loses their job in the years following Katrina. Thousands of jobs are lost. The school board loses its power. The, the charter board networks, which are the, the ones that are really governing, are becoming increasingly white, 60, over 60% white in a district where 85, 87 or so percent are, are, are black students, right? And so what you get is a disconnect between the community and their schools. And so public opinion surveys show that although a majority of white residents in the city of New Orleans think that the schools have improved, and there is evidence according to test results that they have improved, a majority of black residents do not think that the schools improved post-Katrina, right? And so then the question is, are, are black residents, you know, not paying And so then the question is, are, are black residents, you know, not paying attention? Do they not, you know, know what schooling is about? Or we can think about this differently and say, well, they're looking at schools in a very different way. Where testing perhaps is part of it, but it's not all of it, right? And so when we're thinking about accountability, when we're thinking about what schools are supposed to do, we need to think about it comprehensively. And so in the case of Chicago, what I would suggest is as we think about whether it's an appointed system or an elected system, how is it that we can draw connections, stronger connections between the communities who are doing important work? Trying to make sure that, you know, the carceral state doesn't make its way in more profound ways into the school system, making sure that students have the ability to, like English language learners, which are increasingly a significant part of the Chicago schools, that they're getting the resources that they need, right? And so these are the kind of things that we need to think about. So when we, Vlad had mentioned this in his comments earlier, just, I'm, I'm sorry, Rebecca mentioned this in her comments yesterday, that we know that when we have more diversity in the school system, I mean, on the school board, for example, they are, not only do we see test scores improve, but we see funding for schools improve. We see a number of black teachers and teachers of color improve, right? And so there's a series of measures that beyond test scores that are associated with a more diverse school board and stronger connections to the communities, including more parental engagement, right? And so, yeah, nutshell, that's what I want to impress upon our audience here.
Thank you, Domingo. Okay, we've got a lot in play and I guess I'm going to add a little bit more. Which is, you know, we've been thinking about accountability to voters in the context of school board elections and then concerns about, you know, who those voters are or what organized interests might be in play. But whether or not the school board is elected, there are other branches of government. There is a mayor that either may be appointing or not, but has important roles over issues involving education that, that school board members have to pay attention to. And that there are courts handling, handing down all kinds of, of decisions that bear upon the performance of schools and what's likely to happen. And, and I'm wondering, so that when you think about what it means to be, and here I'll come back to you Vlad to kick us off. But we think about what it means to be a school board member and you're looking out and you say, there are, I mean, it's coming at me from all angles, right? There are unions, there are court decisions, there's, there is this, there are the state, there's the state as well, which is a subject Domingo for, of your, of your book, right? You just maybe decided to get involved. It's, it's not like, well, I can point to, you know, the, the thirteen percent of people who voted, you know, turned out to vote in the last election and say, if I get them right, if I satisfy them over the next couple of years, I'm going to be good. You're, well, you're being sort of attacked from all sides in some ways, no? So how, how do we think about what, how this, this translates into school board performance, given that, that, that there's not just an electorate to pay attention to?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a great question. And, and, you know, I think it, it illustrates some of the challenges that elected officials face, the public officials face. And, you know, I, I, I do think there is an important, you know, there, there is an important training piece of, so I, I, I'll give you, I'll give you, I guess I'll, I'll plug some work that a different AJ Crable from the Council of Great City Schools has done. And so he started this thing called the Effective School Board Project, or the School Board Effectiveness Project, where he does training for school board members. And part of that training is watching hours and hours of videos of other school boards. And I watch some of these videos, I have to say, it is painful. Because most, most of what school boards do, and, and I encourage you to go to YouTube and watch these meetings. It's a four hour meeting, like the first hour is giving out plaques for sports teams that won some, some scholar, some, some, you know, athletic competition or giving, you know, giving a lifetime achievement award for retiring principal. Very little of that time is spent actually about on students and like on student outcomes, right? There's a lot of things like constant bargaining, there's a lot of arguments about contracting and, you know, should we prioritize minority and women on contractors? But if you look at like, how much time does school board spend talking about student outcomes? And not just test scores, but like student outcomes, like graduation rates, like college attendance, very, very little. And so I, I, that, that partly reflects the kind of political pressure that is put on school boards, the kind of demands that people make who show up at school board meetings. And I've shown up at school meetings with signs, other people do too. It's rarely about like big picture student issues. It's usually about, again, my job or is that my kid and they're gifted and talented program in that one school? And not about these broader systematic issues. And so I think what, what you, what, you know, what, what the outcomes that you see are the result of these pressures. And, and as I think you see that reflected in what school boards actually spend their time on. And I think that can be improved regardless of the method of appointment or, or selection. And certainly, again, AJ believes this. So I say he spends a lot of time training school board members and saying, here, here's what you do. First step is develop goals. Second step is monitor those goals. So make sure that every meeting, you're spending time looking at data to see, is the superintendent actually achieving the outcomes that you set out? Turns out, school members never do that. And so I think that's the other piece of it, right? Is regardless of how it's selected, right? There, there is, I think, a, a, you know, there, there is, it's a skill. And I think it's a skill that can be developed. And I think there are interventions and reforms that can make that better. So I don't know if I actually answered your question, but.
Terrifically helpful. Jessica and Chris, either you want to grab this, how are we to think about then accountability? How it differs when you shift from, not, I mean, we were talking about election, you know, electoral accountability, but there's a kind of accountability when it comes to appointments as well. You serve at the discretion of, in this case, a, a mayor. So how are we, I mean, and this could be with regard to education, but if more generally, you could think about mayors make all kinds of appointments in lots of domains. What does accountability look like in that kind of setting?
Yeah, I think, I think that this is, you know, Vlad said he was getting to be a little political science nerd for a second there. And I think maybe there's another chance to throw in some, some political science here, which is, you know, one of the things that makes this comparison between the mayor and the school board complicated is that precisely because the mayor is responsible for lots of things, she can sort of trade off her energies on these different things to please different groups who care more about them. And, you know, one of the facts about, you know, those local schools in a place like Chicago is that, as we've talked about repeatedly, their demographics don't look like the demographics of the city. The Chicago public schools are much more heavily, you know, people of color than the city overall. So they have much more at stake in the actual operation of the schools. The mayor, when she's making these trade offs, can consider, you know, I've got one group of constituents that the schools really matters. Maybe a lot of people for the nor, on the north side of the city of Chicago who aren't sending their kids to public schools, maybe the schools are not their most important issue, it's something else. And she can kind of figure out, I'm going to do this over here to please this group of constituents. I'll do this over here to please this other group. When you split off the school district to make it, it's one thing and that's all it does. They can't make those trade offs. And you have additionally now, given the, those parents say on the north side, who maybe don't send their kids to public schools, the same voice in these school board elections, or maybe more so depending on how we're going to draw the boundaries, right? But if it's based on population, now they're going to be weighted according to their population, not their share of students in the schools. They're going to be very influential in these school board elections despite perhaps having lower actual stakes on a, in a real, real sense. And the school board can't really make the, those trade offs that, that the mayor could have done. And I think that's really important when we, when we think about comparing these, these institutions and which voices are going to be very influential. I think perhaps ironically and unintendedly, I don't think this is what people have in mind when they propose an elected school board. I think you're probably going to end up giving more influence, not less, to the folks that actually don't have kids in the schools.
And, and, and more broadly, if I hear you right, Chris, the, the kind of accountability that comes from being appointed to somebody who is running for office in more salient elections, who is then held accountable, not just for one policy domain, but, but for a bunch of policy domains and is thinking about the city as a whole, being accountable to them in the extreme, maybe more sort of democracy enhancing relative to a single function election where only high demanders show up. Now, the fact that there are only high demanders show up isn't kind of preordained. And there, there are ways that you can draw out people and make it more inclusive. But as a sharp, sharp point of contrast there, there are gains to be had from being appointed by, by, in this case, a mayor.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you about the flip side of that.
Yeah, good.
So if you compare elected to appointed executives in cities, say city managers compared to mayors, what happens when cities move to city manager systems so that the person who heads the executive branch, the bureaucracy, is an appointed person? Almost all of the functions of the bureaucracy get hidden from view of the voters. And it's very, very difficult for voters to participate in holding that bureaucrat, those bureaucrats accountable for demands that they might have. And one of the problems can, can end up being is that people may agree, maybe the city council agrees that the city manager isn't doing a great job. But in order to remove the city manager, you also have to then agree on a new city manager, right? And so it can be very difficult politically to do both of those things, to hold the person accountable and then also replace them with somebody who's going to do a better job. And we know from lots of, you know, decades of research that mayors are, it, it is easier to hold mayors accountable than it is to hold city managers accountable for certain kinds of outcomes in cities.
Terrifically helpful. Rebecca, can I come to you?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks. So I just wanted to, to add in sort of building on both Vlad and Domingo's point about public perception, right? So whether we like it or not, what the public wants from their public institution is really important. And so I just think we need to, you know, put this also in the broader context of, you know, education is right now the largest public institution that the public has up until now continued to fund. And I think we require both their, their political support as well as their public financial support. And we have to think about the degree to which, you know, as Domingo points out, if perception is that, you know, some forms of governance, regardless of what the test scores say or other measures of outcome say, is perceived of as illegitimate, you know, what will that mean for the ongoing functioning and health of, you know, this public system that we have? And so I, I think that, you know, this is an important conversation today with our crisis sort of in legitimacy and, and support for public institutions. And, you know, education has traditionally been, everybody thinks their schools are As or Bs, you know, and whether that's right or wrong, it has led to support. And will these changes erode that support?
I want to come to you in just a second, but could we linger on this point just a bit more, Rebecca? Which is that we've been talking about, like, what are the evaluative criteria that are brought to bear when voters hold school board members accountable? And whatever that might mean, reelect them or not on the basis of demonstrated improvements in test scores or something else. But you're asking kind of a prior question and a foundational question, which is simply what do citizens want from their schools, right? And, and this is a hugely important topic. And could you say a bit about, I mean, if it isn't just test scores, what else? What are the other things that people look to when they, when they, when they are, are, are looking for, you know, when, when they, when they evaluate school performance?
Yeah, so I think that, you know, when we did public opinion polling of the public, now this is getting old, right? So in the two thousand five, two thousand seven era, people wanted better academic skills, but that was actually not overwhelmingly what they wanted. It was the most important, but they really wanted it balanced with other things like, are you preparing my kid for work later on, right? Are you preparing my kid to be a healthy person, right? Are you getting phys ed? Are you preparing my kid to be well-rounded? Are they getting arts and exposure? Are you preparing my kid to be a good citizen, right? Sort of the, many of us would love if we could get our kindergartners to follow directions and just be kind. And so I think that there's, and those are just sort of tangible outcomes for kids. And I think, you know, Domingo can probably say more than I can, that for a lot of communities, they also want their schools to be a hub of the community. And that includes, you know, far beyond the school day, but additional community resources like health clinics, public meeting spaces for all sorts of community groups. They want schools to be an important place of employment for their community. And in some communities, you know, the schools have been the path to middle class African American communities. Or the maintaining of a rural community is dependent upon providing sort of these stable employment commute jobs through the school. So I think people are sometimes thinking far beyond just even what their kids are getting, but from what, you know, we as citizens want from this institution.
Thank you. Vlad, I'm going to come to you in just a second. I see you. But Domingo, we're touching on a variety of things that, that I think resonate with much of what you've said. I want to hear what you have to say about the matter.
Yeah, no, so I agree entirely there with Rebecca's comments. I just want to go back to a little bit and, and add to Jessica's points of, you know, the counterpoints, the, the flip side of what Chris was, was mentioning. So in, in the appointed system, right, in the case of the mayor, you know, while, while I agree with, with Chris that, you know, the mayor has, because she has the ability to, as, as the, the, the one appointing the school board, she can trade off, right? But there is, there is, and by doing the trade offs, she can give something to a particular community here and something else in a community, you know, a different community elsewhere. But we know from urban politics as well that there are, there is so much negotiating and there's so much leverage that it's never available to the public, right? And so there is no reason really to believe that education politics, that it's, it's, while it might be away from the public, in the case of the appointed system, that there might be things that are happening that demands being trusted upon a mayor that we never know about, right? And so because it's not in the public eye, the mayor still has to pay attention to this. And so to Chris's point, so you got a city like Chicago, and this happens in many cities, not just Chicago, as has been stated already, where you have the population of the school, of the school population looks different than the entire city population. There are power brokers within that city whose kids and whose interests are not with the, the, the students, but are they're very much concerned with the schools because of funding, because of other things, right? Building usage and these kinds of things. And so what I want to just, just kind of emphasize here is that there, there's, there are ways that the mayor may be succumbing to pressure outside of the public eye. And so when we're thinking about appointed systems, we have to think about who are people accountable to? And the mayor may be accountable to people that we don't know about, right? And so that, I think that's a part of the, the conversation that we need to, that, that needs to be highlighted.
Thanks, Domingo. Vlad?
I think, I just wanted to make kind of a quick kind of cautionary note, which is I think we've been treating public opinion as kind of fixed. And I think that, that is a mistake. I think actually public opinion is very much in play and shaped by like strategic messaging. So like if we did a poll now, we would see that most Republicans are convinced there's voter fraud. And I think very few of us would say, well, therefore we should go and like cut back on voting because of public opinion. And I think the same is true in education, right? Whether test scores are seen as legitimate, whether parents in New Orleans think that school's gotten better or worse, I think reflects in a large part, like the messaging that they are getting from other members of the community, whether it's churches, whether it's teachers' unions, whether it's those groups. And so I think, I think we have to be, I think, very cautious at like saying the goal is to maximize public opinion. And I think really be, really think about where's that public opinion coming from? I think we see that right now with public opinion on school reopenings, right? And so I think public opinion is fluid and it's very much a product of this very political process. And I think there is as much top down opinion leadership where opinion response to what school districts are doing as bottom up, what school districts are responding to what constituents want. So I just want to throw that out there, because I think it's a really important point.
Thanks, Vlad. Very helpful. We have a question. Sorry, my dog, she does what she does and I can't stop her. She's in the background. So I'm going to try to do this quickly. As a, as a sitting elected school board president, I can confidently say that there is an overwhelming fear of discussing data. This fear sometimes comes from school board members, but can also come from the superintendent. And the comment goes on to sort of lay out concerns about one, I think, the capacity and interest in people in kind of diving into the data that, that, that is animating the research that you're doing, Vlad. And that, but also underscoring the importance of the relationship between a school board and superintendents as well. Comments? Anyone want to jump in on this? How are we to think about school boards into this mix? If I could, Rebecca, if you could give us a, yeah, the, the, the first stab at this. The relevance of, of school boards and the relevance of data more generally in these kinds of deliberations.
I mean, I, I certainly think that our sort of the academics, community desire for data and the way that we disaggregate data is very different than the general public and school boards. And, and I think that that's a real challenge today is trying to make sense of all the data that we are putting out there. So in that case, you know, Vlad and I completely agree that it is really important that we figure out not just what to that it is really important that we figure out not just what to do with the data, but how to communicate it accurately. And there are certainly programs out there that do try to train school board members on how to understand and disaggregate data. But as we all know, as an academic myself, right, the, it's, the, the models are way beyond my understanding. And so how we're going to get there is, is a challenge, because the data are way ahead of most of us.
If I could just add something to that, I, I think this raises some questions that were brought up earlier about just what, what the nature of the school board will be, say, in a place like Chicago versus, say, an average school board. So there are thirteen thousand or some school boards in the United States. Most of these are very small, from relatively small districts. People, as Jessica said, serving as part time, maybe not even part time, just volunteer jobs on one hand, to relatively, you know, professionalized people who might take this on as full time. Now, I haven't seen exactly how this role is being discussed in Chicago, but I think these things are consequential. Because if you're talking about somebody who's a full time board member, who may be well compensated, may have some expertise, they, will they have a staff? You know, a simple question, you know, like think about the Chicago City Council. We have a large council, they have some staff. We could debate their level of expertise, but my guess is maybe more sophisticated than a, than in a small suburban town whose, whose supervisors are serving, you know, an hour a week or something. So these are things that we have at least some control over as we think about, about if we really are going to move in this direction to an elected school board. And I think that's something we should talk about is there are decisions we make about what that elected school board will look like that can have consequences. Do they have staff? Do they have expertise? And also, again, in a big city like Chicago, you know, we have lots of third party institutions that do these kind of analyses. We have the consortium for, you know, for public schools here at the university. We have the Civic Federation. So there will be lots of third parties, I think, analyzing data. I don't think it'll be the same kind of barrier as it might be in a much smaller setting of, say, a suburban school district. But we can make choices now, a whole bunch of choices in how we would structure an elected school board, that I think can make this more promising. And I totally sympathize with the, the person who posted the comment as a school board member about how difficult some of these education data are, how complex some of the analyses are on things like teacher value added and so forth. I feel your pain, but I, I think we can probably structure things to, to at least make it as, as good as it could be.
Jessica, capacity. How do we think about it in local politics?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to just point out that Chris's point is it extends to, to all sorts of different kinds of local offices, right? That when, when we, you know, there's variation in capacity, expertise and skill level. And even in some very big cities that I've studied, and I'm not going to out them here, school, city council members really don't know anything about public policy, how to write public policy. And the more that the administration delegates power to the bureaucracy, the less your elected or appointed officials are going to know about how to actually solve problems and how to actually create good outcomes. And so it's very important in the structure of whatever Chicago decides to do, that you actually empower the school board members and give them the capacity to, to be able to make these kinds of consequential decisions for the students and for their teachers.
Terrific. We've got another question here, which says, is it fair to say that the majority of the contemporary empirical research on school boards is from urban and suburban districts? How might the skew or shape what we know about the role of school boards? And if I could generalize from that and to say, you guys have all written all these papers looking at specific settings, and sometimes it's a function of where data are available or whether there's a, a research designed to be leveraged. Should we, how concerned should we be that the lessons that come from, say, San Diego, Vlad, where you've written a book about, right? Or the, the lessons, Chris, from South Carolina, carry over to other kinds of settings? Or, or should we say that a study about San Diego is only a study about San Diego? Thoughts?
I'm, I'm happy to jump in. I think, I think it's true that most of like the single city case studies tend to be about big urban areas. I think some of the larger quantitative studies are actually probably more heavily weighed towards rural areas, because there's just so many more of them. And, and so I think, I think the big takeaway from all this research is there is a lot of heterogeneity, which is like a fancy word for saying, there, there's not just one systematic thing that, that different policies, different procedures, different processes work differently, different contexts. It depends on the media environment, depends on who's voting, and it depends on, you know, how, how student performance to be measured and all of that. So I think that is probably like the big takeaway, that yes, like things are definitely very different across urban and rural areas. And, and, you know, I think it'd be a mistake to kind of just look at the average or the average effect of some intervention and say, this is what we should expect in Chicago, or this is what we should expect in this other city.
Great. Listen, we're coming up to the top of the hour, which means we have time for one last shout out. We did this last time, we're going to do it again, but I have a slightly different question. Be on your toes. Here's the question. How, what is a, hmm, a policy, a reform, a practice that would create greater alignment between the investments that school board members make and the learning that happens by students in schools? That would increase that alignment, recognizing that what learning is, is complex and is, right, it's contested? But what would it mean to improve that, that alignment? And I'm going to just call some, okay, Jessica, you're, you're ready to jump right in. So lead us off.
Oh, I am.
Yeah, please.
Oh, yeah, so I, I'll, I'll go with sort of big, just to make it interesting. I would actually move away from accountability data as the, you know, test scores is the only measure. And I would really advocate for an inspection based model. This is common in over sixty countries around the world. Some of our competitors that we love to refer to, places in Europe where we see, you know, both very strong schools, we out, we see school choice, and we see, you know, positive student outcomes have a school inspection. And inspectors really can give you that qualitative analysis. They're also experts who can analyze and be really smart about the quantitative data and cut through what it actually means in ways that maybe other folks can't. And so I think that that might be a way to get at a more robust set of, you know, what do we want from our schools?
Great. Thanks, Rebecca. Who wants to jump in next?
Oh, I'll say, just to, I think this is a much smaller focus than what Rebecca mentioned, but making sure that there is information that is provided to all the different stakeholders, that it's clear and transparent and that people have, can access the information when they, when they try to get it, I think is really important.
Great.
I was good, I was going to say something along those lines. I, I do think it's important if we, if we want school boards to pursue a particular goal, that we give people information about that goal and how well it is being attained. And, you know, Will and I, you know, you know, when we had our paper on South Carolina, we found that the media coverage of test scores, for example, declined greatly after its first year. The media is not the only possible source of information. There's lots of others. There's places where they send report cards on the, not on the student, but on the school. Parents could receive a report card. I think it's really important, though, that we have some agreement about what is the content of those report cards? You know, what, they don't want to just know test scores, I think we think. We want to know lots of other outcomes and, you know, having some sense of what they are and having people get, you know, regular information about that, I think, is going to be really important if we do move to this model of an, of an elected school board. Voters can't really hold anyone accountable without information about, about the performance.
Thanks, Chris. Domingo, could I come to you?
Sure. I mean, I think, I mean, probably along the lines of what Rebecca was just saying. I, I think my plea is not necessarily to, you know, the voters. I think it's just all of us, including academics included, included, to think about education more about how we help communities thrive. And so what are the ways that we can try to assess that in, in, in the most comprehensive ways as possible? So that's the only thing I would, I would add. Oh, and one, one other thing I would like to add, and I always try to tell this to my students, democracy is messy, right? Local politics is messy. But the only way to do democracy is to do democracy. So just want to add that.
Thanks, Domingo. Vlad, you started us off yesterday saying, hey, how are we think about, you know, the performance of school boards as they relate to learning? So what would enhance the alignment?
Sorry, I froze for a second. Is that a question for me? Well?
Yeah, that's for you.
Sorry, fantastic. Yeah, I, you know, I, I think information is important. I would agree. I think information without sanctions is not enough. I think we've learned that from twenty years of, of accountability reforms. So I think that, you know, the best thing school boards members can do, and school boards can do is set clear goals. And then I think empower principals, building principals, give them the authority to run schools, give them the authority to hire who they want, give them the authority to fire who they want, and then hold them accountable for very clear articulated goals with clear measures. I think that is the one single reform that we can do to like really improve governance and align incentives of everybody involved.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca Jacobson, Jessica Transtein, Domingo Morrell, Chris Berry, Vlad Kogan. This has been a terrific conversation. This is a live issue. We're all going to watch it with real interest. And I'm grateful for all of you coming forward and sharing the research that you've done. So thanks.
Thanks, everyone.